I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting for the city of Springdale for October 1st, 2025. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Brown, if you could take role.
Mr. Gleves.
Present.
Mr. Jacobs.
Present.
Ms. McFarland.
Present.
Mrs. Salvo-Myska.
Present.
Mr. Vanover.
Present.
Mrs. Webster.
Present.
Mr. Anderson.
Present. Council, in your packets, you had the minutes for our September 17th, 2025 meeting. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved by proclamation. All right, next we'll move on to a proclamation we have on the agenda, and that's with Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we have Chief Stanley present with us today. And our proclamation reads, whereas the city of Springdale is committed to the safety of its citizenry and all those visiting our community, and whereas advancing fire prevention awareness draws a focus to the serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, of the presence of lithium batteries in many household devices, which introduces unique fire risks, and whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas residents are urged to three key calls to action by only limited, only listed products, charge batteries safely and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use, such as overcharging using off-brand batteries without safely, safety certifications or exposing batteries to damage, can result in fire or explosion. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas the city of Springdale firefighters are dedicated to protecting lives and property in their service to our community. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home," serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium batteries safely to reduce the risk of fire in homes and community. Now I, now therefore I, Lawrence C. Hawkins III, Mayor of the city of Springdale, do hereby proclaim October 5th through the 11th, 2025 Fire Prevention Week. And one, one last thing along the lines of Fire Prevention Week, invite everyone to come out this Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 for our Fire Department Open House. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hawkins, for those important reminders. And Chief Stanley, as always, you're welcome here anytime.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up we have communications. Ms. Brown, are there communications for council this evening?
No communications. Thank you, Mr. President.
Next we'll move on to communications from the audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address council for any reason, simply need to come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you can address, address council for up to five minutes. At this point, the floor is now open for communications from the audience.
My name is Doyle Webster. I live at 12142 Peak Drive, Springdale, Ohio. And I want to talk a little bit about ordinance 42, which is on the agenda tonight for first reading, that addresses the pay for elected officials. And I want to make one thing very clear. I am not against this body getting a raise. It's been 20 years. Take the raise. You deserve it. Okay? Now, the reason I'm here is I am, I'm opposed to the others provisions of this ordinance that indexes your pay to some factor outside the city, like township trustees, commissioners, or whatever. I think that you deserve it, you deserve this raise, but you also, I think, deserve to, your loyalty to the community to be transparent about this. And I think once you turn that over to some indexing, then all of a sudden you get a raise, nobody knows about it. I mean, that's wrong. I've heard transparency come, come out of a lot of mouths around, around here, and I think that would be the most untransparent thing that you could do, is to turn your, your salary, your future salary over to some, somebody outside of the city. And I think there's, there's certainly a concern, a legitimate concern, about your salary falling under the PRS level for full credit. And that's, that's wrong. Guys, that should be looked at, and I would think that maybe the law director could come up some language that would direct the administration or finance committee or whoever, probably the administration would be the best place to have it, periodically, maybe every 1st July or October, whatever, whenever PRS announces what the, the thresholds are going to be for the coming year, then they take a look at that. If any elected official is going to fall below that, then they bring that to the, to the president of council, and the council gets a chance to address that. If you, if you don't want to vote yourself a raise, then fine, don't do it. But I think you'd have every reason to do it if the PRS changes the, the minimum for qualifying. So, anyway, that's all I have to say, but thank you for listening to me. I did, I did have a copy of this document that I guess the administration put together for the finance committee. They've got 73 entities on here, and only 11 of them have a higher salary than, than the mayor. But I still think the mayor should get a raise. Thank you very much.
Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mayor Webster, for coming out, and we appreciate your input, and I'm making what you're making, so no change in that. So, and we're, we're going to have the opportunity for discussion with regard to this when, when this comes up, but a few things, we do want to state, and I know you know this, but the people at home may not know this, whenever there's been a change with regard to elected official salary, nobody can vote on their own raise. So, this would take place after everybody on the dais is not in office, somebody would have to rerun to be elected, so no one can vote on their own raise. So, and I know you know that, but I want to make sure that people at home understand that. And then, you're 100% right, we, you know, it's been 20 years since there's been action taken by council, and that's not, that's not your fault because you weren't on city council to go vote on it. I know that I personally, probably halfway through my last term, had referenced this issue before, because, because I do work for a state entity and I, I do get PRS credit, I'm aware when I get notices when things go down. So, when I knew that they were raising the minimum for a full-year service credit, I had referenced it in a council meeting, there were no takers with regard to addressing it, I think I said at the time, and I said it again, sitting in this seat as mayor, when I raised it again, folks can do whatever they want to, I'm getting a full service credit with my day job, but we historically, as you've indicated, our elected officials have gotten a full year service credit.
Yeah.
And I'm just asking, Mr. Yul and Ms. Morgan, been 2017?
It was last year.
So, 2017 was the last year that our elected officials, members of council, were getting a, a full credit amount. So, that's eight years, that's not, that's not good. And again, has nothing to do with the mayor's office and administration, that's an action of council. So, I had raised it before, nobody wanted to do anything with it. And I understand it's a sensitive topic, but again, you go back to, you're not voting for yourself or your own compensation, you're voting for the next person that sits in that seat. And if, if you run and you get reelected and you're in that seat when that takes effect, God bless, but it's not about you, it's about the next person. And so, I, I think that having been a member of council, we've, we've missed the boat a little bit with regard to letting that slide for eight years of people not maintaining that, which is something that I know historically has been a thing. So, let Mr. Yul address some, some things with regard to those minimums and those built-in increases. I know we won't go deep dive into this because we've got this coming up, but just while the mayor's there.
Yeah, if there's a quick comment, I think that's fine, but I do want to try to keep any deliberation or discussion around the ordinance in the section of ordinance, so it's easier to find, but if you do want to make a comment, please feel free.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, just those, OPERS is, the, the percentage increases are directly related to the cost of living adjustments that township trustees and county commissioners receive, so that's how OPERS bases their minimum threshold. So, we'll probably get into that a little bit more, but that's where that automatic increase came, came to play, because that 5% is how OPERS determines what the minimum contributions need to be made for a full-year service credit.
Well, my concern, I just, I just don't want to see the city of Springdale get on this slippery slope that a neighboring community has gotten on years ago, and now they're paying their mayor $48,000. We're paying ours $21,000. I mean, and there's not that much of a difference in that type of government or responsibilities. And I think that's the danger, danger you run of just turning it over to, well, we'll index it to trustees or commissioners or whatever. So, I, I, I think you need to be concerned about that. Thank you.
All right, the floor is still open. If anyone else would like to address council for any reason?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Herbert, and I live down the street in Glendale, Ohio, and I am a member of the Hamilton County America 250 Ohio Committee. And Nicole, do they have a copy of the presentation?
We emailed one, but never we've had it.
Okay. So, the, I'm assuming you have a copy or have seen it, but basically, I'm here tonight not to ask for money, just to ask for your participation and make you aware of next year being the America 250 or the semi-quinsentennial celebration of our country. At the federal level, there is a team and a mission that was established to help celebrate our, our anniversary next year. And then on Slide 2 of the presentation that you received, the state of Ohio has also established a committee and a framework to celebrate next year, and they've also established a proposed calendar, month by month, next year, for things that they want to highlight and help promote next year. Going down a level, Hamilton County, Hamilton County Commissioners have established the same commission. It's led by Pavin Partik from the Hamilton County Clerk of Courts in the courthouse, and Elizabeth Pierce from the Cincinnati Museum Center. They formed a volunteer committee of 20 volunteers, including myself, from the county to help promote, get the word out, and then as we get into next year, establish concrete things that we're going to do to help promote it. But what I'm asking you tonight is for your participation to become an official America 250 Ohio community, the city of Springdale. And in the packet, there's a suggested adoption resolution to consider, and then if, in subsequent discussions and so forth, you decide to approve it and become an official America 250 committee, that framework is there for, to sign and so forth. Again, if you do decide, the, I guess, commissioner or Nicole or somebody, there is a workflow from the state of Ohio that you have to fill out with contact information, saying that we want to participate. There are six steps that you have to go through in the workflow, and then you receive confirmation that you're an official committee and community. There's logos that you can use to help display things. We would get a calendar of events that you are going to do, that you want us to help promote for you. Likewise, the things at the county and neighborhood counties, communities, I'm sorry, I've already spoken to Glendale, Wyoming, Miami Township and so forth, as they get onboard and start establishing things, and you want to promote it or advertise it to your community, then you would have that available to you. So, it's just something that we're trying to get started now before the first of the year, because once January comes, there'll be a lot of activities and get the word out, and that's basically it. Thank you for your time.
I'll say thank you for coming and sharing this with us. I, I know when I heard that you were coming and the information was shared, I spent a little bit of time looking at the 250 website that's out there, and I had a lot of this same information that's useful. One thing that I thought was interesting is this is, this is a bipartisan committee that was formed, it started, I think, in 2017 under President Obama, and then was carried on in subsequent presidencies. The co-chairs at the national level include Mr. Obama and, or President Obama and President Bush, former presidents that both chair that. So, this isn't a secular thing or one of those, you know, beat-your-chest-type-issue or dividing thing. This is supposed to be, as I understand it, something that brings the community together.
Correct.
And I think that's important in these days to recognize that some of these things are, they don't, they're not, it's not a dog whistle for something else. This is just celebrating our country. For council's benefit, what I'll share is that you do, he, he mentioned the ordinance and the process. If that's something the council is interested in doing, you certainly have the opportunity to bring forward that ordinance on your own at any subsequent meetings, just add it to the agenda. Certainly, you could bring it up in new business either tonight or in subsequent meetings after you've looked at it, and it might be good to review the material and get a feel for it before we make a decision to move forward. But just know process-wise, if it's something you think the city should participate in, that's certainly any council member's prerogative to bring forward. All right?
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Floor is still open. Second call. Third and final call. All right, at this point of closing, communications to the audience, and we're going to move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up, we have ordinance number 40, 2025. This is a second reading and does have the emergency clause. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 40, 2025, an ordinance establishing and implementing a program to charge mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the city of Springdale Fire Department and declaring an emergency. Whereas the annual volume of emergency and non-emergency incident responses continues to rise, and evolving environmental protection and homeland security requirements related to equipment and training impose increasing operational demands on fire department services. And whereas the city of Springdale, the city has explored various strategies to sustain high-quality emergency and non-emergency service capabilities provided by the Springdale Fire Department amid rising service demands, recognizing that effective response efforts reduce incident-related costs for insurers, businesses, and individuals while saving lives and minimizing property environmental damage. And whereas the city desires to implement a fair and equitable procedure by which to collect mitigation rates for emergency and non-emergency services and establish a billing system in accordance with applicable laws, regulations, and guidelines. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the city hereby establishes that mitigation fees shall be charged by the city for the delivery of emergency and non-emergency services by the Springdale Fire Department for personnel, supplies, and equipment deployed and utilized at the scene of emergency and non-emergency incidents as set forth in the attached Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference, mitigation fees. Section 2, that the mitigation fees to be charged by the city for the delivery of emergency and non-emergency services by the Springdale Fire Department shall be based on actual costs of the services and that which is usual, customary, and reasonable, which may include any services, personnel, supplies, and equipment. Section 3, that the mitigation fees may be increased annually based on the annual percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index, CPI, as developed by the Bureau of Labor Statistics of the U.S. Department of Labor. Mitigation fee adjustments may be reviewed and adjusted by the mayor and city administrator on the anniversary date of the passage of this ordinance to keep the city's cost recovery program in conformity with increasing operation expenses. Section 4, that a claim for the recovery of mitigation fees shall be filed to the responsible parties through their insurance carrier, and in certain circumstances, the responsible parties will be billed directly. Section 5, that the city may adopt rules or regulations and from time to time may amend, revoke, or add rules and regulations not inconsistent with this ordinance related to charging or billing of mitigation fees or procedures for the collection thereof. Section 6, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 7, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law. Section 8, that this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, peace, health, safety, and general welfare, and shall, subject to the terms of Article 2D, 3D of the Charter, be effective immediately. The reason for said declaration of emergency is to implement the program to begin collecting the fee at the earliest possible date.
Counsel, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 40, 2025. It does have the emergency clause. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Brown, if you poll council.
Mr. Vanover.
Aye.
Mrs. Salvo-Myska.
Aye.
Ms. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Gleves.
Aye.
Mrs. Webster.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye. Ordinance number 40, 2025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next we'll move on to ordinance number 41, 2025. This is also a second reading with an emergency clause. Mr. Jacobs.
Ordinance number 41, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Fire Recovery USA LLC for billing services associated with the recovery of mitigation fees charged by the city of Springdale for emergency and non-emergency services performed by the Springdale Fire Department and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Springdale, the city, has established mitigation fees to be charged associated with emergency and non-emergency services provided by the Springdale Fire Department, and whereas the city desires to enter, enter into an agreement with Fire Recovery USA LLC associated with the collection of the fees to be charged by the city for emergency and non-emergency services performed by the Springdale Fire Department. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Fire Recovery USA LLC for the performance of billing services to collect mitigation fees for emergency and non-emergency services performed by the Springdale Fire Department, the agreement. A copy of the agreement is attached to Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law. Section 4, that this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare, and shall, subject to the terms of Article 2D, 3D of the Charter, be effective immediately. The reason for said declaration of emergency is to implement the program at the earliest possible date to begin collecting the proposed fees.
Counsel, you've heard the second reading of ordinance number 41, 2025. It does have the emergency clause. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Brown, if you poll council.
Mr. Vanover.
Aye.
Mrs. Salvo-Myska.
Aye.
Ms. McFarland.
Aye.
Mrs. Webster.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Gleves.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye. Ordinance number 41, 2025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next on the agenda is ordinance number 42, 2025. This is a first reading. Mr. Jacobs.
Ordinance number 42, 2025, an ordinance establishing compensation and cost of living adjustments for the offices of mayor, president of council, and members of city council consistent with state statutes. Whereas the city of Springdale seeks to provide fair and competitive compensation for its elected officials, and whereas it is in the public interest to align local elected official compensation with service credit requirements established by the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, OPERS, and whereas Ohio Revised Code, Section 505.24, provides statutory guidance for compensation increases for township trustees, including annual cost of living adjustments, and whereas the city desires to align its compensation practices with standard use for other elected offices to ensure consistency and transparency, and whereas the city recognizes the importance of providing access to health, vision, and dental, dental insurance benefits to its elected officials in a manner that is equitable and fiscally responsible. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, mayoral compensation. Effective December 1, 2027, the annual salary of the mayor of the city of Springdale, Ohio, shall be established at $25,000 payable in equal monthly installments in accordance with the city's regular payroll schedule. Section 2, council compensation. Effective December 1, 2027, members of the city council shall receive an annual salary set at $9,975 payable in equal monthly installments in accordance with the city's regular payroll schedule. Section 3, president of council compensation. The president of council shall receive an annual salary at $10,575 payable in equal monthly installments in accordance with the city's regular payroll, payroll schedule in recognition of additional responsibilities associated with this position. Section 4, annual adjustments. Beginning January 1, 2028, the salaries established in this ordinance shall automatically increase each calendar year by the same percentage increase as the cost of living adjustments applied to township trustees under Ohio Revised Code, Section 505.24. These increases shall not require additional legislative action and shall be applied on January, January 1 of each applicable year. Section 5, OPERS service credit eligibility. Compensation provided under this ordinance shall be administered in a, in a manner that ensures all elected officials remain eligible to earn full service credit under the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, OPERS, in accordance with minimum salary thresholds as annually determined by OPERS rules and guidance. Section 6, Springdale Community Center membership. Effective December 1, 2027, each elected official of the city of Springdale shall be entitled to a complimentary family membership at the Springdale Community Center for the duration of their service in office. All additional fees associated with classes, programs, events, rental rooms, activities, or clubs shall be the sole responsibility of the elected official. Section 7, administrative authorization. The city administrator is hereby authorized to implement this compensation schedule, adjust rates annually, and ensure timely reporting and remittance of OPERS contributions as provided by this ordinance. Section 8, authorization for health, vision, and dental insurance. Effective December 1, 2027, the mayor is hereby authorized to offer health, vision, and dental insurance benefits to all elected officials of the city and shall offer such coverage with the same wellness provisions, if any, at a rate not less than other city employees and not to exceed 35% of the annual premium. Section 9, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 10, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, this was the first reading of ordinance number 42, 2025. This was an ordinance that was brought forth by the finance committee, so I didn't know if, if Mr. Vanover or Ms. Webster wanted to speak to this before we opened it up for general questions. Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we, as I alluded in the last meeting that this was...
Could you bring your mic down? I just want to make sure. Thank you.
This was coming forth, it, we discussed that. I, there are some of these that don't matter to me, to be honest. The, the rec center, I'm silver sneakers, so I've earned that, that benefit from there. The healthcare or the medical care insurance, that's, again, it's not going to apply to me because we're, we're past that. And again, these are all of, well, with exception of the rec center, the healthcare is optional. You can pick that up or decide not to. That's the individual. I, I'm not overly excited about it, but it doesn't, it's not going to play any effect on me. The, the compensation, yeah, it's, it's been 20 years. We're long overdue. I do tend to agree with the comment that Mayor Webster mentioned about the choosing what anchor that we tie to. I, I think that if, well, for example, if OPERS comes in and says, well, there's not any increase, but the township trustees give themselves an increase, then was it really warranted? And, and I understand the, the politics of the whole picture. And as Mayor Webster said, I mean, it's, the ordinance spells it out, these don't take effect until January 1, 2027, so basically, the potential, none of us sitting up here can be there, or possibly not be there or will be there. But that's the way it is, you know, state law says that's the way it is. So, you know, that being said, it's really, I guess, at this point, we throw it open and, you know, discuss, probably, I mean, we can go section by section, or if somebody's got one they, they want to talk about, then we go from there, but it's, it's your show.
Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things for, for clarity's sake, and obviously, Mr. Vanover or Ms. Webster were... Just a few things for clarity's sake, and obviously, Mr. Vanover or Ms. Webster were there for the Finance Committee discussions, and so they've had a very in-depth opportunity to hear about and review some of these things. So, there's a, there is a minimum amount of money that a person has to make to have the minimum PRS credit for a service year. If it's less than that, then they would get a half-year's credit if they serve for the capacity of a full year. The, what we found through looking at some other municipalities is they have tied their elected officials' salary or income to percentages of, sometimes it's county trustees, sometimes it's county commissioners. Now, it's important to know that county commissioners, township trustees, judges, prosecutors have salaries that are dictated by the Ohio Revised Code. So, there's not a choice, if you're the prosecutor, to go, hey, I want to get paid X. It's a statutory thing. Within that office, you can pay your employees whatever you want to, and there are some instances where you may have an employee that could get more than the prosecutor if they wanted to. But those are statutory. So, some of the things that you'll see with regard to other municipalities, they will say, we're going to do a percentage of township trustees, or they may say, we're going to do a percentage of county commissioners. Now, that is a very big difference between those two entities, between what county commissioners make and what township trustees make. I believe the most county, the county commissioners are getting, it was like 125-ish?
112.
$112,000. So if you said, hey, we're going to take 41% of 112,000, that's a lot of money, right? Versus township trustees are around 25?
For 2026, they'll be at just over 27.
So for 2026, 26,000 some odd dollars, right? So if you're doing a percentage of that, that's a far smaller amount of money. The idea primarily with regard to this is making sure, as we've done historically, the elected officials for the city are going to be over the minimum required for PRS credit. And if you're looking at this, and Mr. Yul can give you some more detail, but if this was passed, when this would take effect of December 1, 2027, we would be just over that minimum by approximately $200, okay? For eight years approximately, we've been under. And so it's important to be able to go through and address. However that gets talked about, and Mayor Webster raises a very valid point in terms of making sure people know what's happening, and I think there's probably some opportunities to go through and do that. In terms of, one, it's going to have to be budgeted for, so when there's those discussions that can be raised, either by Finance Committee report, as well as when council goes through and looks to approve a budget. The other thing that's very important, and we talked about during the Finance Committee meeting, is just because the statute creates a circumstance where township trustees go up 5%, 3%, whatever it is, council still, it's not a runaway train. Council could still sit there and go, we're not going to have that increase. What this does create is an opportunity where those things can happen automatically with some type of structure to make sure folks are staying ahead of the minimum service credit without it coming back through to go through and address. Now, the 20 years that have gone by, and talking with some other former council members from years, years, years gone by, and Mayor Webster would, I'm sure, say it too, those things are contentious sometimes, those things are people, things that make people feel uncomfortable about voting on, and I think the number one misconception is people are voting for their own salaries. They're not. None of these things take effect with anybody who's on this dais unless that individual is reelected, okay? So, this is about making decisions for those other people. And I said, as a former member of council, when these things came up, I'll sit here and say, those councils that I was a part of missed the boat for eight years. Two terms worth of people that are under the mandatory minimum, and that's not what we've done historically. And so, it's an opportunity to make sure that we're going to stay above those things. Thank you.
Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, one of the questions is, how did you land at this number? And essentially, what we did is, we looked at the salary that the finance officer, or I'm sorry, the finance director of Quaker Council was making, the $16,800, and divided that by eight elected officials. That subsequently gave us $2,100 per elected official. So we just added that to the salary, then we looked at what the mayor's compensation was, and just brought that back up to what was approved in 2005. We went back to look at Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, and in Ohio Revised Code, Section 145.016, that determines the credit for contributing service. Within that code, it's directly linked to Section 505.24, which establishes the percentage increases, excuse me, for township trustees. So, for example, well, because of the modest amount that the council members are considering for their annual salary in 2028, because we'll look at a full year of service credit, so the minimum service credit, the minimum money, minimum salary a person would need to make to get a full year service credit through OPERS is $10,197.30. With the, if council passes this ordinance with the proposed $9,975, that would go into effect December 1, there's a trigger for a 5% increase effective January 1, 2028, which effectively would put council members at $10,473. So the difference, the minimum service credit is $10,197.30, and council would be at $10,473. So roughly about $280 above what that OPERS minimum contribution needs to be. That's why marrying the two, keeping the section in to stay in line with the percentage increases for township trustees, that's directly linked back to the ORC section established by OPERS, which dictates their percentage increases. That will ensure that elected officials will remain slightly above what the minimum threshold is for OPERS service credit.
Sorry, just to make sure I followed that last part, because I was trying to figure out why we weren't just tying it to the OPERS one-year service credit. You're saying that by, it's better to apply it to the statutory code that OPERS uses?
Because it changes every year. Sometimes they set it out for four or five years in advance, like they have it run out through 2029 currently. So if it weren't, it would be a moving target that council would have to come back to, and it would apply to some and not others, depending on when the legislation would be passed.
So it's not so much that we're trying to tie it to a council, you know, a township trustee, it's just that's a convenient tool to stay in line with the OPERS number?
Correct. Because the percentage increase for township trustees and county commissioners--
Is part of--
Is based, is how OPERS determines their minimum service credit. So it goes up by that percentage. So that's an easy way to keep things on par, albeit council members will not be compensated the same as a county commissioner or a township trustee.
But it keeps the percentage, which then keeps us in line.
Correct. The percentage keeps us just slightly above what that minimum threshold needs to be.
Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to that, I think the question may be answered. Let's say if we go back eight years, or even ahead five, typically, how often does OPERS change that floor? I know they can every year, but do they? Have they?
Yes, they change it every year.
Every single year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Unless anybody has any questions about that part?
Go ahead.
I, in looking at this, I understand it. I appreciate the mayor's comments that he says were worth it. That means a lot. I think it's a modest increase, but as I'm looking at some of these, I can't get behind Section 6. I don't feel comfortable getting a free community center membership just because I happen to win an election. It's a small amount of money. I'm not saying it's going to cost the city a lot, but by that same token, it doesn't cost me a lot. And I feel like paying that membership is part of me being a resident of the city, and I don't mind doing it. Again, I know it's not a big-ticket item, but I just, I feel like it's unnecessary personally, and I think it's a bit more than we need. And I've also heard some concerns about Section 8, but for me personally, I would like to see Section 6 struck from this ordinance. Thank you.
Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to Mr. Jacobs' comments, I appreciate those, with regard to Section 6 in the Soprino Community Center membership, that came up because, as I was sitting there looking at the things that our employees get without cost, that's one of those things. And so, as I sat there and said, well, I think at one point I was like, well, we should offer that to elected officials. We should just do that. It's like, well, we can't just do that because it's compensation. So council would have to go vote on that. But that's how that came up. It's not something where, you know, the idea is, hey, let's figure out something cushy to give elected officials. It's because our employees throughout the organization get that. And so some of the conversations we've had internally in terms of the administration is, are there things that everyone who works for Springdale gets that it makes sense for elected officials to be able to receive within reason, right? And that was something that seemed very simple. Part of what all elected officials will do, hopefully, is be in and around our city. You being in the community center and in and around there is part of your duties as an elected official to see and be a part of what's going on. But whatever council decides, but I want you to know that that's the context of where that came from.
Ms. Webster.
I just wanted to like to say that I do agree with Mr. Jacobs on the free stuff at the rec center and the medical stuff. I'm like you, I don't really think we need it. Thank you.
Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a note on the healthcare. That was something that we saw on some other ordinances with other elected officials, so is why we included it. But I will say, the percentages, I know in Finance Committee, they asked us to look at like a 25, 50, 75% annual premium. Once we started doing that, once we got much above 35%, the annual salary that you would earn wouldn't cover the cost of the premiums. So at a 7.5% increase is what our healthcare has been increasing over the last two years, three years, or I think it was five, one year, and then 7.5, 7.5. So it would quickly outpace what you would earn salary-wise. So we tried to provide a little bit of cushion to make it potentially tolerable, but that's obviously, if that's something that you choose to leave in.
And while we're on the topic of Section 8, I had questions about that one as well. I heard Mr. Vanover's comments that it wouldn't necessarily apply to him, which I understand that, once you get to a certain point, the insurance, you'd move to Medicare or a different program, or have pension programs. One of the things that was a concern for me with Section 8 is that working families, in cases where the spouse of an elected official would be working, more and more companies are adding rules to their policies that if their spouse or family member is offered insurance at their place of work, that they're no longer eligible then for the company benefits of that spouse. And that can sometime come at a pretty steep premium for it being family membership versus two individual policies. So my concern when I saw this right away was, those types of elected officials, this would actually end up, just by offering it, would end up costing them more than their salary to get those, just to have health benefits. So it doesn't become a benefit anymore if you're in the case where you have a working spouse, where they have a better plan or a plan that you've been a part of. I know it also would have an impact for anyone that would be part of the ACA or marketplace. Being offered insurance through a workplace changes the benefits that are available. So just by offering them can be actually a barrier in this case, unless it's a very generous plan, it actually could be a detriment. So I understand, I appreciate wanting to add it to make it uniform, but it's something that I'm not sure that is warranted for this type of position. So I would prefer we not include Section 8 for that reason. In terms of Section 6, I agree with the mayor's sentiments. It's a minor benefit, and if it removes a barrier for somebody to be more freely part of the community events, I think it's a great thing to include, but it's not a hill I would die on. I think it makes sense to include, but if people don't, I don't have any problem with it. But I'm not comfortable with Section 8, as a, just in general. All right, any other questions or comments? So we heard a fair amount of discussion on this item. We certainly have the opportunity to have it on our agenda next time, unless Finance Committee wanted to take it back to their committee and make adjustments before. We have the opportunity, as council, in the meeting this time or next time, to make amendments from the floor, and we can strike things, or we can have a clean copy that the committee brings back for our next meeting, since we have time. So I didn't know if you wanted to take that as an opportunity to take the feedback and make changes. Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we can. We have a little bit of time, but due to the legal definitions, this has to be done before December--
Yep.
--to keep everybody legal. But yeah, we can take back. I guess the easiest way, you know, so that when we bring an endorsement back, that it's accurate to what council is looking for, so maybe we walk through, well, I guess, the two top, the two sections that are brought up are Section 6 and Section 8. Then maybe just take a quick vote tally and see, and if it's, the majority doesn't want those, you know, we'll do them individually, then the ordinance, when it comes back, will reflect what council's wishes are.
Yeah, I don't think we can take a formal vote or straw poll from the dais unless there's an actual motion that we're acting on, but I think we can. I'm looking to Jeff. You're agreeing? That's correct.
Correct.
All right. So I'm hearing from Law Druck, that's correct. So we can't actually take a straw poll up here unless there's an actual motion to amend or change. But I think you've heard feedback on those two and where people are at. I would encourage people to contact Ms. Webster or Mr. Vanover before that meeting and share those comments. Just because they're having a committee meeting doesn't mean that we can't share our input directly with them one-on-one. You're certainly able to do that. Just be mindful of open meeting rules, that you're not doing that as a group, but you can certainly share your view with other council members going into committee. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to strike Section 8 from this ordinance.
Second? I'll second. All right, we have a motion to strike Section 8 from the ordinance. It's been moved in second. Question or discussion about removing Section 8 from this ordinance? Ms. Salvo-Myska, is this light for this motion?
No, I'm sorry, that was before.
All right, well, I will say that I certainly would like to see it stricken, so that will have my vote. All right, with that, I see no other lights. Ms. Brown, if you poll council on striking Section 8 from ordinance number forty-two, twenty, twenty-five.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mrs. Salvo-Myska.
Aye.
Ms. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Vanover.
Aye.
Mrs. Webster.
Aye.
Mr. Gleves.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye. So Section 8, the motion to remove Section 8 has been approved by seven affirmative votes. So going forward, we'll refer to this ordinance as ordinance number forty-two, twenty, twenty-five as amended, and Section 8 has been stricken, and then we'll update the subsequent section numbers, nine and 10 will be changed in the next version. Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would there be any adversion that when we bring this back to the council next, well, next meeting, to include the emergency clause? Would we have a second reading and then have that so that the paperwork is done?
I can say from my perspective, I don't see any problem with that because the ordinance actually doesn't take effect until years later. And there's certainly the opportunity for future councils to change this before it would take effect. So just because the raises would come in '27, anytime before then, the councils before that could make another change. So I wouldn't have any problem with that. I don't know if anyone else would want to share their thoughts. Okay.
Okay.
We're still in deliberations for ordinance forty-two, twenty, twenty-five. Any other comments for tonight?
Did you say old business?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
We still have a resolution before then.
I'm ready for it.
All right, so, Mr. Vanover, you can decide if you think it's worthwhile to have a committee meeting or just finish as we were at the next meeting. I'll leave that to you and Ms. Webster. All right. All right, now we'll move on to Resolution R-16, twenty, twenty-five. Mr. Jacobs.
Resolution number R-16--
Resolution number R162025, "Accepting the Amounts and Rates as Determined by the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Leavis and Certifying Them to the County Auditor." Whereas the Council of the City of Springdale, the Council, in accordance with the provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 1, 2026. And whereas the Budget Commission of Hamilton County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to the Council, together with an estimate by the County Auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by Council, and what part is within the 10 mil tax limitation, and what part of the levy taxes is outside the internal 10 mil limitation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, with members elected thereto concurring Section 1. The rates, as determined by the Budget Commission in its certification as set forth in the attached Exhibit A, are hereby accepted. Section 2, there is hereby levied on the City of Springdale's tax duplicate the rate of each tax necessary to be levied without and within the 10 mil limitation as detailed on the attached Exhibit A, which is adopted by reference as is fully recited herein. Section 3, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 4, this resolution shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of Resolution R162025. As a financial resolution, it can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Question to discussion. All right. Seeing none, Ms. Brown, if you poll council.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R162025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right. That ends ordinances and resolutions. We're now moving on to old business. Ms. Webster.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the administration and the Law Director, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, I see Mr. Braun's there. What, there's scuttlebutt in the city about us having three marijuana dispensaries. I don't know how many of you have heard about this, read about it on Facebook or whatever, but I'd like a clarification, as the residents would. Because I don't want to be known as, I don't want Springdale to be known as a marijuana capital of Hamilton County.
Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Ms. Webster, thank you for bringing this issue up. And it's important that people do not get their information from Facebook sites that are not the city's. You have questions, you do one of two things, you either call the city or you call one of the elected officials. That's how you get information, not from asking random people online. Okay. That said, so, city council voted and put into ordinance where there are to be no more than two dispensaries in the city. So, city council authorized the mayor to issue no more than two licenses. And so, that means just that. Now, as mayor, I can issue one license, two licenses, or no licenses. And, and so, but I can't go beyond two unless city council does something different. And so, as of right now, there have been two licenses issued. I think some of the discussion that people may have is there, these dispensary opportunities are very exciting for people that are in that business. It appears there must be a lot of money in that situation because they're very competitive in trying to get their hands on them. And so, we've seen that. Despite issuing two, there's been another entity that's been around, and I think at one point, they were going to come to planning commission, and they've gone and applied for different things, and they've applied for a state license. But that's still different from our Springdale license. And city council controls if we're going to have that in our city, and how many we will have in our city at a maximum. And from the mayor's side, in terms of checks and balances, it's up to me if we issue any licenses, but I can't issue more licenses than what council's allowed for. So, we, we're in the legal limits of two, and myself, administration, our building department have explained to the third entity that we can only issue two, and that's it. Unless council does something different, that's it. So, I think that may have had some impact with regard to the one pulling their planning commission application some months ago. But yeah, it's a great thing to bring up, and for clarity of everybody's clarity sake, council's only authorized two. We can't have more than two by our own law. We control that.
Okay. They've talked, the state is the one that has told somebody that there's, they want to come in here, or they, over by Chili's, I think?
Yeah. And you're, and so, you're correct. So, the, the issue is there are state guidelines, but we, as having home rule, we control our own things. So, you can get whatever license you want from the state of Ohio, doesn't mean that we have to let you into our city of Springdale. And so, you're correct. There are entities that have gone and gotten a state license, but it doesn't mean that they get a Springdale license.
Okay. That's good. I'm glad to know that, because a lot of people aren't real happy thinking that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Still in old business? All right. New business. Is there any new business anyone on council would like to bring forward? I do have one item tonight, just a piece of housekeeping. As we saw at, I think, our last meeting, we had an ordinance that came through from the urban farming committee that was finished, and that, to my knowledge, and after speaking with the chair, have decided that that's, they've completed the task, the scope of work that they had related to that committee. So, I'm just letting council know tonight that I'm disbanding, with my thanks, the work that was done there, and the urban farming committee has been disbanded, having completed its scope of work. So, thank you, Ms. McFarland and Mr. Jacobs for going through that process. I think everyone on council learned a lot going through it, with zoning changes in general. We worked through some things on how to work better with planning commission, which was very helpful. And then we also made the city more friendly for bees, which I think was a great move. So, thank you for that work, and at this point, that, that committee is now closed. Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, since we had the presentation this evening, what would be councils, would they want to see the American 250 ordinance resolution come in? Because we'll need to recommend to administration and law department that they get this put together.
Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in favor of doing that. I first saw this earlier this year, and I did send an email, but it was just kind of an informational thing that this project was being developed. So, I'd be in favor of bringing it in front of council, and I'd be in front of, in favor of the city joining the effort.
Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I agree. I would be in favor if the city or whoever has more information could pass that on to us, just so we can kind of review. I've seen some of the stuff they sent out, but not sure if I'm missing anything.
Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to be clear on this. The man that came forward said there was a presentation that was sent. What's going on with that? Because I didn't get it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Gleaves. So, let me give a couple of things on this, just so we can make sure we're following the process the way we should. So, there was, the gentleman that came forward to speak represented it. You will receive that, that packet. I don't know that it's gone out to everyone yet, but you will have a chance to have that. Included in that is a sample ordinance. What we would have to do, based on our rules of council tonight, is if council wanted to request that ordinance be created, that, we have a process for that, and what it would take is that, a motion inside of new business to explore or creating or following that, the 250 present, commission presentation. That would then, once that would be moved and seconded, we would have discussion and then vote on it. If council agreed to that, it would just then be, I would then be responsible to work with Mr. Braun, our law director, to work through that ordinance that would be needed, and bring that to council at our next, whenever we're available, which would probably be the next meeting. And then it's an ordinance, and it has steps that we would have to do. Inside of that is things that we'd be asking administration to do as part of it, and we could have all those discussions. But the first step on that would be a motion to, by council to, to join the 250 commission based on the sample ordinances, and then I would take it from there. Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion that the City of Springdale join into the America 250 city designation and the appropriate ordinances be drawn up and presented to council.
Second.
I believe, I heard Ms. Webster, I'm sorry, I heard Ms. Sullivan Weiscup first on the second, but we can put your name on it too. All right. Moved in seconded. Question to discussion about the motion to create as a council action, the needed work for that. All right. Seeing none, Ms. Brown, if you poll council on taking steps to join the 250 committee and the related actions to that.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. It's seven affirmative votes to create the ordinances to start the process. That, that vote did not join us to it, it just means that council as a whole is taking that action. The reason that's different than just a council person making that action is now for us to not have it on our agenda. It would take an act of council. So, it's just a way to make sure that we will be tracking this one very closely. Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to answer Mr. Gleaves' question, we'll, we'll get that PDF out. It was five PowerPoint slides that, when he reached out to us and said he wanted to come and talk to council tonight or at the council meeting to talk about America 250, he said, yeah, he'd come in or whatever, we'd let him talk. As a normal practice, we don't put presentations up unless it's an actual presentation that either council's requesting or administration's requesting. So, but we will get those PowerPoint slides out to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. Still in new business? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to meetings and announcements. Ms. Sullivan Weiscup.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission will meet in these chambers on Tuesday, October 14th at 7:00 p.m.
Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rental Committee will meet October the 8th at 2:00 in the caucus room.
Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just again, a reminder, join Chief Stanley at the firehouse this Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Also, there'll be a ribbon cutting for Tinker's Treasures this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. over on Kemper Common Circle.
Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. The zoning code revision committee is scheduled to meet in a room adjacent to these chambers October 13th at 2:30 p.m.
Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board of Health will meet in these chambers on October 9th at 6:30 p.m.
Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Saturday is going to be a busy day. We also have our health fair from noon to 3:00 at the community center in the auxiliary gym. This Saturday, October 4th.
Ms. Morgen.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Civil Service Commission will meet tomorrow, Thursday, October 2nd at 2:00 p.m. adjacent to these chambers.
All right. Well, that was a lot of meetings and announcements. All right. Next, we'll move on to communications in the audience. This is the second and final time this evening, and if anyone in the audience would like to address council for any reason, simply come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to address council. The floor is now open for communications in the audience. Second call. Third and final call. All right. I'm closing communications in the audience. Next, we'll move on to a recap of legislative items and legislation still in development, while also being mindful that the Reds do kick off at 9:00. Mr. Jacobs.
Counsel, as you review your legislative summary, item one, an ordinance establishing and implementing a program to charge mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the Springdale Fire Department and declaring an emergency was addressed by ordinance number 402025, receiving a second reading and seven affirmative votes. Item two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Fire Recovery USA LLC for billing services associated with the recovery of mitigation fees charged by the City of Springdale for emergency and non-emergency services performed by the Springdale Fire Department and declaring an emergency. That was addressed by ordinance 412025, receiving a second reading and seven affirmative votes. Item three was addressed, or item three was a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levis and certifying them to the County Auditor. That was addressed by Resolution R162025, receiving seven affirmative votes. Item four, an ordinance establishing compensation and cost of living adjustments for the offices of mayor, president of council, and members of city council consistent with state statutes, was addressed by ordinance 422025, receiving a first reading, was amended, and will be returned to us on October 15th as amended. In development, we have item five, an ordinance amending Chapter 94 of the Springdale Code of Ordinances, regulating taxation. That will receive a first reading on October 15th. Item six, an ordinance declaring certain city property a surplus property and authorizing the sale, disposal, or transfer of surplus property will receive a first reading at our next meeting on October 15th. And finally, there was a vote by council to direct administration to draft some legislation to join the America 20, America 250 project with seven affirmative votes. And unless there's anything else from administration, that's all we have.
Council, anything else? All right. Then all that's left before us is item 15.
Would you adjourn?
Before we adjourn, go Reds, we're adjourned.